Good evening, everybody. Please rise for the Plen of the United States. We have an incredible full house. Thank you all for your patience and your cooperation. It's great to see so many families and staff here this evening. We're going to go a little out of order because we have a very special moment here this evening. And I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Turner.
Thank you all for being here tonight, whether in person or watching us virtually. I think it is vitally important that I describe what happened in the ER on Monday night, a little bit before 7:00 p.m. I received a phone call from the head of our security to immediately get over to the high school gymnasium as the student was not responding. When I arrived on the scene, our coaches, our head custodian were actively providing CPR to one of our students. The paramedics had just arrived and started administering medication to revive the student. Once the student had a pulse, he was placed on burning and lifted into an ambulance. I rode with him to the Glencoe Hospital while trying to reach his mother. When the mother and the older brothers arrived, the hospital personnel thought it might be appropriate for me to first greet the family to let them know immediately that their loved one was okay. The hospital personnel let me walk the family to the room where he was situated. The medical team then updated the family with its vitals and important medical information. Artie Stanstrom, our head custodian here at the high school, is not working then. He heard the message on our new district's 911 notification and immediately came to the high school. I cannot begin to tell you how vitally important it was that Artie was here, not only for the student but for myself and the coaches. Artie is also Locust Valley's first department chief. That evening, our high school assistant principal, Mrs. Amy Watson, Artie, and our coaches remained at the hospital until our student was moved to the children's hospital nearby. We had an amazing family that joined us at the Glencoe Hospital and later assisted with retrieving the students who wanted us at our high school and getting that child his car back to the home. So it was one last thing that that family had to endure. Although this was certainly one of the most trying experiences for all of us, the word community went loud up there today. The following morning at 9:00 a.m., we held a meeting with the boys that were trying out that night at the basketball stadium. Our high school team, Mr. Di Clemente, opened the conversation, then I spoke, then Dr. Danielle Turner, our athletic director spoke, Lisa Cherniewski, our director of guidance, Mrs. Amy Watson, our assistant principal, and Mr. Dan Katta, our assistant principal, both spoke. Artie spoke, and finally, our coaches spoke to our students. Our students left knowing we are all there for them anytime. At 1:00 p.m., I held an emergency meeting to review the situation. As we reviewed the steps and the procedures we followed that evening, we concluded that we still needed to purchase seven more AEDs for our middle school and high school. They are on the way. What saved our student's life was that he received immediate lifesaving efforts. I've asked Dr. Danielle Turner to speak with all of you this evening about her efforts this evening with Dr. Joseph Vio. In addition, she will introduce our heroes. Andrew Segal, our varsity basketball coach, Benjamin Martinez, the varsity assistant basketball coach, Andrew Bach, the JV assistant basketball coach, our baseball coach, Brian Maruso, who was not supposed to be here, but just happened to stop by because he wanted to see the kids and say hello at the tryouts, Michael Sabatino, who's one of our teaching assistants, and Elliot Aramayo, who's our varsity middle school, high school, girls volleyball coach. Our coaches did not hesitate to perform CPR and utilize the AED machine. All of our coaches are certified in first aid AED. At the end of this presentation, we have a special guest named Scott Seela who's with us tonight, and he will conclude our discussion from his expert opinion. And I want to personally thank him for keeping us strong during the events that took place. He did explain to us that he's a first responder, and he recognized how difficult this would be for all of us through the next couple days or the next couple weeks. I can personally tell you that he was right. I've been up since 3:00 a.m. I did not sleep the night before that. Encountering any child at our school facility in the way that I saw him was absolutely devastating. I want to thank our team of professionals for their undeniable commitment to our students. Safety is our number one priority here at the Locust Valley School District. As a mother of four and grandmother of two, there is nothing more I ever want for my children to be safe and healthy. As we move forward as a team, we will continue to be vigilant in safeguarding your children. Now I'm going to invite Dr. Turner to continue his session. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Turner, now. Thank you to the board of education. Thank you, everybody, for being here. Been an emotional week. I'll never pass on the opportunity to brag about my coaches, but I am famous in the backside of recognition I can give. They want none of this, and I know that, and it's really too bad. So we're going to go there. But as Dr. Turner said, all coaches in the public high school system in New York State are required by law to be CPR first aid and AED certified required. Locust Valley will not hire a coach unless they hold this certification. In addition, coaches receive concussion training. They're also certified to finish the UCFET. So I think it's important that that's out there. None of our coaches or our privileged youth teachers are hired without that certification and ongoing pressure and certain upgrading training every two years. And although they're certified CPR, AED, and first aid, what those courses don't teach you is how to push your emotions aside when a child collapses. They don't teach you how to steady your hands or clear your mind and respond with clarity in a moment of crisis. These men behind me did not hesitate. They did not freeze. And as one of them said to me afterwards, "It was fight or flight, and we had no choice but to fight," and they did. Side note, earlier today, I received a phone call from a gentleman named Tyler Robinson. We employ a company named Varsity to oversee and inspect all of the AEDs in our district, and Tyler has run that program. So anytime an AED is fused, there's two sets of data that come with the AED. One is more personal to the patient, and the other gives essentially what's a play-by-play of what happened and what went on. The moment the pads went on the child, the moment the pads were fused. Tyler said to me, "While there's always room for improvement, the readout looks like a textbook example of a perfect emergency response." In other words, not just my opinion, but data confirms that these coaches did not just rise to the occasion, they executed every step with absolute precision, perfection. Their CPR was impeccable, their use of the AED was flawless. They saved a child's life. Dr. Turner mentioned that, you know, Dr. Zito, who's a local physician, our community mentor, I would know well. I've been speaking with him prior to this event happening, and we have a few things that were in motion prior to this, and those things are kind of pushed to the forefront at this point. We're looking to have Locust Valley become a heart-healthy school, Bayville Locust Valley become heart-healthy communities. More details are to come regarding that and their certification and getting more people trained in using those techniques, CPR, AED, first aid. We also are looking to have the San Francisco mobile EPOC program unit come to Locust Valley as soon as possible to test every student that wants an EPOC program free of charge. They can do 35 in a night, but we can also offer you services on where to go to get one if you like that. We'll set up 10 nights of training. Dr. Turner also mentioned that we ordered seven new AEDs and most likely more to come. And finally, I would like to brag about the school education department. All of my teachers are not only AED certified and first aid certified, they are certified trainers, meaning they can train others to become trainers of our state CPR, AED. But we also have plans internally to train more of our staff members who are physical education staff. Not only that, but our students in grade 6 through 12, part of their physical education curriculum, regardless of what elective you take, receives a CPR, AED, and first aid unit. All of our kids within graduate high school will be certified in first aid in some of the areas. So essentially, in that room, outside of our amazing coaches, all of those students in the gym, unless it's their first year in Locust Valley, were certified to help and help. So I think it's important to recognize that as well. But again, tonight is about gratitude and our amazing coaches, so I really just want to recognize them at this time, if that's okay. And Dr. Turner mentioned some people that aren't here. I think it's worthy of recognizing them. And first is Elliot Aramayo, our varsity volleyball coach. He just happened to be one of our coaches. I'll move on to Mr. Brian Maruso, our varsity baseball coach, and assistant. Coach Yanis Bach is our JV basketball instructor. Fun story about Ben Martinez, who's our assistant coach for this year. He's on the board agenda to be approved tonight, so technically he may have been not. But he was. And I'm happy he wasn't, and I'm not sorry. So Mr. Ben Martinez. And my head varsity basketball coach, he loves, loves, loves attention. Coach Andrew Segal. Oh, my goodness. Mike Sabatino. Elliot Aramayo. Mike Sabatino, are you here? Mike. Mike, give it a few time things. I know I don't really want to hurt him, but Coach Yanis here. Where's Artie? Artie is here.
But, you know, for me, coming into a scene and seeing these gentlemen before you is what made the difference. We couldn't be prouder at this particular time. And I will be visiting the street tomorrow. Dr. Turner and I will be there early tomorrow. The mom continues to reach out. She's so appreciative of everything we've done with this. And while you're up there, Scott Seela is here in the house somewhere. Scott, please come on if you want to say hello to Mike. But this is the gentleman that really deserves it. I'm going to hand you a mic, Scott, because what you said to me will remain forever, and I will remain with these gentlemen. Here she comes, Allison.
Nobody wants to hear me that bad. First off, I want every parent to know, and everybody in the school leadership, you couldn't have asked for a better group of people to be there when the second was back, okay? These guys, without hesitation, jumped into action, and because of what they did, we had the outcome there. Okay, everyone? I was at the firehouse, and I heard the call come in at 6:58, and immediately I heard Artie on the radio requesting my unit to come forth with, which, for people who don't know, that means we have something serious. I need you here right away. From the firehouse to here, I was on scene within three minutes. I apologize for driving through your neighborhood that fast, but I knew that there was something serious going on. When I came in, I saw the student on the floor. Everything that I needed as a paramedic to show up on scene was being done, okay? It made what I needed to do that much easier. Within two minutes of being on scene, we had the student back. By the time we got him on the stretcher, he was fucking dead. By the time we got him into the ambulance, it was almost like the event never happened, okay? It was because... It was because these guys did not hesitate that we're all today having a happy moment instead of mourning the loss of a student. Nobody can train harder, nobody can prepare for the stress that you are going to be under when these calls come in. I've been doing this for almost 30 years. Okay? I've worked, even though Locust Valley is volunteer fire department, you know, we pay paramedic on staff 24/7 for these type of emergencies. You know, we joke that we're there to break glass in case of emergency. The other night, that's what we needed. Everything that they did was exactly what needed to be done, and they really deserve all the praise out of everybody who responded that night, that we're able to say that he's going to be home one day, hopefully sooner than later, and hopefully back on the basketball course. But you guys really got to give these guys a round of applause. I tried to stress to them that night, even though the medical emergency is over, what they're going to be going through, and everybody who's in that gym, they're going to be going through over the next few weeks, it's an emotional over. But they can all take pride in what they did. They acted better than some of the times when I roll up on scenes and I have to train first responders. These are the type of calls that even for police, myself, these are the calls that terrifies. Okay? These are the worst of the worst calls, and we couldn't ask for a better outcome. And it's really been everything. So thank you so much, guys. You made my job that much easier that night. RT, thank you for being there. And just really take comfort and know that you have some of the best people on staff at this school, because if God forbid there's ever an emergency, I want those, I want these guys to be there when I get there. Okay? So really, they did a tremendous job. And thank you very much, guys. Really. Well, these people are still working, and they're coming home, okay? But it's because of you.
Thank you for coming this evening, offering to come, offering to speak with our community. This really does mean, say thank you to all our first responders and our staff. From the bottom of my heart. I just wanted to acknowledge, I had a child at the practice or tryouts, so I kind of started from that end, and I just wanted to extend my thanks as a board member and as a parent to everything that everybody did that evening, and I know into the next morning, and I know will continue to do for the student had the emergency and for everybody who kind of also experienced it. So my sincere gratitude and I'm a board feels the same way. I know you guys have all been through an emotional roller coaster, so I just want to say thank you to all of you for supporting all the children and staff, but I know the kids were really shook up by it, so I appreciate everything. We all appreciate everything that everybody has done to, well, you're also going through this, to be there for them. And I just, one other thing, just to highlight how special the child is who is going through this, he sent a text, my son told me this this morning, he sent a text to the team to check on that, to let them know that he was okay, and like just to help them at ease, which went, which was huge, he's going through this, and he was thinking of that. So I feel that just speaks so much for this child and how grateful you are that you guys, you know, saved his life. So thank you.
Thank you once again, as Dr. Turner was keeping us updated the other night, all of us in our, you know, as she spoke to us, all of us said, and I recommend tonight as well, you give your children, your loved ones, an extra big hug tonight. Our thoughts and our prayers are with our students, and we are all so very proud of the Falcon family and all that you guys did. Thank you so very much. We're going to move now to our public comment period. The first individual is Lisa McLaughlin.
Good evening, and I was going to commend those gentlemen for their wonderful response for the student. Thank you so much for being on hand and saving a life. I would like to begin by praising some recent decisions made by the district. Thank you for approving morning outdoor free time before school. Congratulations on recognizing the Title IX ruling on two genders. And I see the district approved a new procurement portal for bids and order teams. Very good. Now, if you could find it in your heart, to install air conditioning in the high school auditorium and put the check registry online, our ultimate transparency will have made tremendous progress. Thank you for the opportunity to sit in on the curriculum committee meeting last week. I heard a very promising update from the middle school principal about setting benchmarks and teacher recommendations for honors courses. Unfortunately, there was very little time left to address the high school advanced course offerings and the AP IB exam fee policy, which has now appeared on agendas three times. I did get very excited when I heard the AP Capstone program mentioned several times. After review of the most recent U.S. World and News reports in which Locust Valley plummeted from number 20 to 232, I must ask you, WWJD? No, not what would Jesus do, but what would Jericho do? According to U.S. News, Jericho spends $35,921 per student. It has an 89.6% college readiness score. Locust Valley spends $54,772 per student and has a college readiness score of 50.5%. Jericho has always scored in the top 10 high schools in New York State. The Advanced Placement Capstone Program was launched in 2014, and yes, Jericho offers. For the 10 years prior to the launch of Capstone, which includes seminar and research courses, it was argued by education reporters like Jay Matthews of the Washington Post that he considered IB slightly better because of the extended essay component. The College Board took care of that gap in programming and for far less expense. The remedy is simple. In order to save money, improve college readiness, comply with New York State graduation requirements, lower taxes, and yes, improve property values, I was a realtor for 40 years. Now is the time to gracefully and without fuss agree to phase out IB and implement the AP Capstone program. The final graduating class of IB diploma students would be June 2027, and the AP Capstone program could be certified and begin in September of 2027 if you begin preparation now. Keep paying for all the exams as you have been until September of 2027, when the cost of just the AP exams returns to the parents. Thank you for your consideration.
Mr. Marcia.
I'm here to speak tonight about consent agenda number 10, item H, the disclosure and consent agreement, Ingersmith, L.L.P., intermunicipal agreement for shared transportation. Sharing buses with the district, the demographics differ significantly from ours, offers no benefits to our students. We have one of the highest cost student expenditures in the country. There's no, absolutely no reason to cut one as on transportation. As Ms. McLaughlin said, $54,000 a year. When we begin sharing bus servicing, we are regionalizing, plain and simple. I want to remind this board that you voted unanimously to oppose regionalization and invested tax-paid dollars to file a lawsuit with Nstate, built a coalition of 21 districts with nearly 2,500 petitioners, including elected officials, private citizens, civic coordinations to stand with us. Sharing buses does more than impact our private school students, whom we still hold a fiduciary responsibility. It opens doors for our buses to be used, however, another district chooses, including transporting their students into our schools to fill AP and IBCs. This is exact argument Roger, Regent Roger Tillis made in support of regionalization, that higher performing districts with empty seats should share them with neighboring communities. That rationale is clearly laid out in Fall 2024 NY SED Regionalization Meeting, all publicly available on video. Allowing shared busing at the Catholic school level, especially when it is currently illegal, creates a pathway to shared busing for our own high school, right inside of our walls. This is a trajectory that cannot be ignored. John Gross, where is he?
John is not here, I see.
He works, he has, he's compromised, and I really think you should look for a new attorney. If holes are to do what Kathy Holcomb wants him to do, and, you know, maybe you should look for a new attorney, the other ones pushing this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. John Deltaro.
Thank you for all the people that provided service last night. Very rare occurrence, and I have deep hope that things like that just goes on. But there's something else that I could do. Eight years ago, for almost a month, these, and some of the people, he was in the audience, and they were, the teachers were working without a contract for four years. And my daughter, who was running for student government at a school at the time, and said she was running out of platform for the unity. She got out, she didn't write it to me, but a friend of mine, she spoke at that meeting, the ten, spoke about unity on her platform, and the teachers at that time, they're not quite so, quickly, three days after the speech, not first page, but this, the teachers settled their strike of four years. And it's kind of funny. The next thing I want to talk about is present. I think company these boards meetings for 16 years. Five years old, he's 21 now, so. There's been boards that are off the now, or boys that agree with each other, so they're going. The only way this works is if we all work together. Looking, I saw a board when, before I ran, was so dysfunctional, many employees, people on the board were not able to speak. So that's not what we ran for, we run the cases, basically. Looking, coming for the last four, five months, six months, I mean, coming now, the board is, and you press the law. And it's so obvious in these meetings that one person's name, that is, shut down. Also, I, when I retired from work in September of that year, I asked Danielle to fight the county board for school. And now I ride the bus, you know, like, and I ride the bus, I listen, and I listen to administration, I listen to teachers, I listen to almost everyone, and happy this. The reason I left my job was I loved business. I hated the people I worked with. They were dysfunctional and needy or whatever, and it wasn't a great job. Let's try to keep the chemistry of positive, meaningful. With the board, with the staff, they work there, the hell is happening? Let's keep, try to, everything you need, everybody do their job, as we sort of last night, without asking anything, you had six people, they identified a department here in three minutes. That's the way we should look, make it work.
Moving forward now to reports to the board. We're doing some things a little out of order tonight, because we have a very substantial academic recognition program, so we're going to do student representative report first.
Good evening, members of the board, initiators, I can take community members. I'm pleased to share a summary of student activities and events that have taken place across the district since our last meeting. We began the month with this family night in the high school gym. This is a warm, inclusive event that brought together students, teachers, and families of all ability levels. Participants enjoyed a variety of activities, and the evening wrapped up with a welcome to the pizza party that highlighted the strong sense of community within our district. The district's family night at the end of the month highlighted, featured this high school's annual state Halloween, hosted by the student government with support from numerous clubs. Families enjoyed indoor cheerleading, creative displays, and plenty of pop shows. Halloween celebrations continued across all elementary, intermediate, and middle schools with plenty of festivities. In recognition of Veterans Day, members of the Back Blue Club and other interested students attended a special presentation at Nassau Community College. Both the high school and middle school hosted veterans launches honoring those and our community who served. Additionally, high school student government members partnered with the intermediate schools' young leaders to encourage early engagement and student leadership. Finally, this week marks the official start of the winter sports season at the high school. Our student athletes are excited to begin competition. Thank you as always for your continued support for student life and engagement across our district.
We're now going to move to our Class of 2026 Academic Recognition Program. I'd like to call up Mr. DeClemente, Mr. Neskey, Ms. Watson, and Mr. Kappa. Thank you.
It's already a busy, it's already a busy night. My name is Patrick DeClemente, as the high school principal, I thank you for your time. I was fortunate as the principal to be seated next to a community member, Mrs. McLaughlin. So I absolutely want to comment that we've always had pleasant exchange, and I invite her into conversation in the days ahead. I also want to highlight that I never before have had the opportunity to thank somebody firsthand for saving a life. Just want to go back to that firsthand as the principal of the school and as an individual that comes to work every day, you know, to a building with 12, 13 hundred people. It's been, it's been a unique week, tons of distress, and a lot of gratitude to share. So I thank everybody involved in coming together. I also want to highlight, one of the things that we're pretty unique about is that we offer an emergency medical technician program, and many of our community members come together to speak at the program and to also congratulate students and aware of the program. Some of the students sitting here tonight have gone through the program. It's 46 three-hour classes twice a week. It's an amazing commitment, but over the last few years, we put over 32 lifesavers into the community of the ages of 17 to 19. So that's a tremendous accomplishment. When we look for an emergency responder, we may have one down the hallway at Locust Valley High School, so that's, that's something we're really proud of. Number one on the agenda was thanking the lifesavers and understanding how great Number one on the agenda was thanking the lifesavers and understanding how precious each day is. Number two on the agenda amidst a very busy night already, and surely other topics. Number two is the people right here on the stage. I'm proud this evening to recognize and celebrate an amazing group of dedicated students and their parents and our staff. Our staff works each day to drive a challenging academic program which fosters individual and collective growth. We thank our colleagues for their daily efforts and commitment. And tonight, we celebrate distinguished efforts of our scholar students. As the principal and as a parent, I congratulate all of our parents and family members for the success reflected onstage among our students and surely associated with the support, guidance, and sacrifice among our families. So thank you, congratulations to our parents, siblings, and extended families. Congratulations. At this time, I ask Mr. Kappa and Ms. Watson to begin our student recognition.
Good evening. The National Recognition Programs award academic honors to high-performing, underrepresented students, recognizing strong academic performers with academic honors that can be included on college and scholarship applications, as well as connect students with universities across the country helping them stand out during the admissions process. More than a hundred and eighty thousand students from all fifty states were eligible to apply for the College Board National Recognition Programs. Ninety thousand students are being recognized this year in this program. To qualify, students must have scored in the top ten percent of PSAT test takers in their state or earn two AP scores of three or higher by their sophomore year. They must have a GPA of three point three or higher, which is about a ninety. They must identify as African-American, Black, Hispanic, Latinx, or Indigenous, or attend high school in a rural area or small town, and/or be part of a family where a student's parent or parents do not have a bachelor's degree. New for this year is the College Board School Recognition Award. To qualify, the students must have scored among the top ten percent of their high school's test takers on the PSAT, NMSQT, or PSAT-ten, and/or have earned three or higher on two or more AP exams by tenth grade. Congratulations to the students with the following distinguished accomplishments. The first award we're going to recognize are National First Generation Recognition Program Award winners. Please come up when I call your name. Nihad Betik. Angel Sierra. And Gwendolyn Belzer. Next up are our School Recognition Program Award winners. Elizabeth Madden. Laura Warner. Julia Pishoda. Gianna Kraft. Dylan Purcell. Abigail Huang. Gregor Blades. Grace Choi. Nihad Betik. Elizabeth Watson. Sophia Lampoudas. Justin Quach. Delilah Maudlin. Abhay Shrinivas. Wyatt Thorburnson. Ryan Crook. Edie Bergman. Evan Rafi. Caitlin O'Brien. Mirabel Del Junetech. Amon Aurora. Christina Valera. Gwendolyn Belzer. Angel Sierra. Grant Creedon. Vito Retardi. And Emily Weiss.
A commended student in the National Merit Scholarship Program is based on achievement on the preliminary scholastic aptitude test that are known as the PSAT. The National Merit Scholarship Program honors individuals, students who show exceptional academic ability and potential for success in rigorous college studies. About thirty-four thousand commended students throughout the nation are being recognized for their exceptional academic promise. Commended students may become candidates for special scholarships sponsored by corporations and business. Performance on the PSAT was exceptional for these students. Recognition is a credit to those honored individuals, prospective parents, and our school. Congratulations on National Merit Commended Student Honors to Ethicrafi. And Abhay Shrinivas. These next students are being recognized tonight for being named a semifinalist. A semifinalist in the National Merit Scholarship Program, which is based on achieving an exceptional score on the PSAT. These students are included in the sixteen thousand students from across the country to continue in the competition for seven thousand two hundred and fifty National Merit Scholarships with nearly twenty-eight million dollars that will be offered in the spring. To be considered for a Merit Scholarship Award, semifinalists must fulfill several requirements to advance to the finalist level of the competition. They must submit a detailed scholarship application, which they provide information about their academic record, participation in school and community activities, leadership abilities, employment, and honors and awards received. National Merit Scholarship winners will be announced in nationwide news releases beginning in April and concluding in July. Please join me in congratulating the following students for earning the semifinalist status. We wish you the best of luck as you continue in this competition. Edie Bergman. Justin Quach. Grant Creedon. Justin Quach. And Abigail Huang.
Good evening. The AP Scholar Award is granted to students who receive scores of three or higher on three or more advanced placement exams. The AP Scholar with Honor Award is granted to students who receive an average score of at least a three point two five on all AP exams taken, and scores of three or four, three or higher on four or more of these exams. The AP Scholar with Distinction Award is granted to students who receive an average score of at least three point five on all AP exams taken, and scores of three or higher on five or more of these exams. We are proud to honor the class of twenty-twenty-six AP Scholars, AP Scholars with Honor, and AP Scholars with Distinction. The journey through advanced coursework is rigorous and these students love, and these students love and commitment to learning extends beyond a traditional school day. These scholars have embraced the challenge of participating in advanced studies and soared beyond the high standards set forth. As a result, they are confident critical thinkers who are well-equipped for success in college and in their chosen career. Please join me in applauding members of the class of twenty-twenty-six who earned the designation of Advanced Placement Scholar status for achieving excellence on multiple advanced placement exams, as well as demonstrating outstanding college-level achievement through performance on those AP exams. Congratulations AP Scholars, and I will call them up individually. Liam Baker. Edie Bergman, who is at play practice right now, so everyone comes to the pool. Grace Choi. Gianna Kraft. Grant Creedon. Ryan Crook. Mirabel Del Junetech. Emily Dallow. Justin Quach. Sophia Lampoudas. Elizabeth Madden. Delilah Maudlin. Julia Pishoda. Dylan Purcell. Evan Rafi. Vito Retardi. Angel Sierra. Abhay Shrinivas. Wyatt Thorburnson. Christina Valera. Abigail Huang. Laura Warner. Elizabeth Watson. Thank you for allowing us to celebrate you. And I invite, um, Ms. Watson back up to the stage.
This year, the top fifteen students were invited to a meeting with the building administration, director of guidance, and the school counselors, where they were recognized for earning the distinction of the top fifteen students in the class of twenty-twenty-six. We were all eager to share their congratulations on this accomplishment. And when prompted to answer the question, who will you call first? A few students shared that they want to call their mom and dad or their sibling. And to the question, to what do you attribute this honor? Students responded by saying their parents instilled within them the value of hard work, or they pushed themselves to work diligently because they cared so, so highly about doing well. Distinction among the Locust Valley High School ranking of our top fifteen student performers is an outstanding accomplishment. To each of you in the top fifteen, your achievement and success through rigorous coursework should be celebrated with the pride that comes from learning and acknowledging that when you face challenges, you have demonstrated to be persistent, dedicated, resilient, and willing to make extraordinary efforts. Congratulations to each of you on the well-deserved and impressive honor of ranking among the top fifteen highest-ranking academic achievers in your class. Please step forward when I call your name. Liam Baker. Grace Choi. Gianna Kraft. Grant Creedon. Ryan Crook. Mirabel Del Junetech. Justin Quach. Sophia Lampoudas. Elizabeth Madden. Delilah Maudlin. Caitlin O'Brien. Angel Sierra. Abhay Shrinivas. Gwendolyn Belzer. And Abigail Huang. Congratulations to the Locust Valley High School class of twenty-twenty-six.
We are so proud of our class of twenty-twenty-five International Baccalaureate Diploma recipients at Locust Valley High School and to our success. Thank you and congratulations to all of our students who completed this rigorous program halfway, satisfying all international baccalaureate requirements around the IB diploma. Our students listed on the screen have met the challenges that come with university-style preparation and demands. During their two-year academic journey, IB diploma candidates successfully completed several demanding requirements. In the six academic courses, students are assessed through written essays, exams, portfolios, film projects, and oral presentations. They must complete a theory of knowledge course, submit a four-thousand-word extended essay, and report experiences that involve creativity, activity, and service, highlighting their commitment to community and personal growth. Students earn scores on all assessments culminating in a total final score. To be awarded the IB diploma, students must achieve a total score of at least twenty-four points. The outstanding students you see on the screen have all successfully met these rigorous standards and have turned the IB diploma. Our hope is that each student has gained the benefit of academic inquiry and has been engaged in dialogue and assignment set and cultivated from an mindset and goal perspective. Please join me in applause for our students not with us today, but are certainly deserving of our recognition.
Our final two items of recognition involve the salutatorian and valedictorian. Congratulations, the Locust Valley High School class of twenty-twenty-six, salutatorian Grant Creedon. We're going to take a few minutes for the salutatorian and the valedictorian. Grant's diligent efforts, passion for success, and attention to pursuing all the opportunities to achieve at Locust Valley High School resulted in his status as a salutatorian. He's earned a distinguished academic status among the class and is invited to address the school community at our graduation ceremony. Grant has a rich history of coursework that reflects his interest and includes what is not limited to advanced placement and international baccalaureate courses, multi-variable calculus, coding. Grant gets in a car and takes linear algebra at a nearby college campus. Spreads research, college statistics, advanced guitar physics, finance, finance and investments. He's a National Merit semifinalist, also awarded the National Merit Hispanic Recognition and AP Scholar. He's a national merit semifinalist, also awarded the national merit Hispanic recognition and AP scholar distinction, an IB diploma candidate pursuing skills of bi-literacy and civic readiness, and of course rostered in multiple honor societies. He's the current president of our student body. He's influential in the culture and policies of our school. This year, serving as the new member of our Board of Education. He is thoughtful, clearly well-spoken, an upstander, and always considerate. Identified by his counselor as brilliant, disciplined, and acquisitive, Grant's efforts include tutoring others, recycling graduation attire to support the needs of future graduates, and organizing a book collection to the benefit of others. A true student-athlete leader, Grant demonstrates success as an outstanding competitor participating in football and wrestling. By teammates and coaches as well as classmates and for reasons associated with personality, decision-making, and humility, Grant is certainly viewed as a friend, a leader, and a captain. Grant Creedon continues to be a candidate in the Coca-Cola Scholars Foundation's search for the top high school students in our nation. The search for the next generation of community and educational leaders. And to Grant, I say regardless of the outcome, by the Coca-Cola Corporation, our students and our staff are proud to consider Grant a true Locust Valley leader. For the well-deserved and impressive honor of being our salutatorian, please join me in congratulating him. Congratulations to the Locust Valley High School class of 2026, valedictorian Justin Quack. Justin's diligent and perfection for success and attention to pursuing all the opportunities at LVHS have resulted in his status as valedictorian. He's earned the highest, the highest academic status among our very talented graduating class and is invited to address our school community in June. Justin has a rich history of coursework that includes and is not limited to advanced placement and international baccalaureate courses, multivariable calculus, French orchestra physics, fitness, and filmmaking. He is a super talented and accomplished individual who was a national merit semifinalist and AP scholar, an IB diploma candidate pursuing skill of bi-literacy, and of course, in multiple honor societies. A collaborative, considerate, and extremely involved individual. Justin is a creative filmmaker. He's a content creator. He always has been at Locust Valley High School, winning numerous accolades. Just a few weeks ago, being honored with classmates at the Five Towns College Festival for the film Chronicle of Avoid Displaced, and currently serving currently serving on the Youth Advisory Board at the Cinema Arts Center in Huntington. His combination of interest and achievement in film, as well as theater, all come together for the benefit of our community when he performs each fall and spring at our school. This fall, ironically, just a few days away, he'll be performing a clue as the absent-minded academic Professor Plumb. And he told me he's dressed, he's dressed his outfit. He's a very, very professor. Despite being an All-State cellist and a track and field athlete who dedicates significant time to powerlifting, Justin found time to lead an awareness campaign. He came to me one day and said, "I'd love to get tree replenish going on Locust Valley High School." I said, "Justin, what is tree replenish?" And he went on, with a friend, Grace, he went on to present not just his opinions, but a well-researched PowerPoint or Google slideshow to make. Tree replenish prompting sustainable efforts to offset negative environmental impact, he was going to get behind putting hundreds and hundreds of trees into this community, correct? Mr. Rain in the facility department said, "Patrick, where are we going to put all these trees?" He said, "Justin won't be gone. We'll have too many trees." So, this is true. This is what Justin did. He prompted our awareness because he felt it would allow every person in this community a better opportunity to see the stars. And that was probably one of the best days of my career when I went home to my family and explained that I met with a student who wanted to give us an opportunity to see the stars in a clear way. He ultimately, he ultimately responded when a colleague of ours, somebody close to LV who runs their local publication called The Stroll, she said, "Would you have anybody who would be a good fit as a writer or a staff member?" And before long, we sent it out to the whole school. Guess who's on staff for The Stroll right now? Justin Quack, student contributor. Justin, he's impressive in so many ways, and he has the brightest of futures ahead, not only because of his success, not only because of his efforts and talent and intellect and the family support, but more so for the combination of his superior skills, kindness, humility, and what art staff refer to as his ability to be a good friend and a person of high character. For the well-deserved and impressive honor of being named our valedictorian, please join me in congratulating him. So, Mr. Croza always likes for us, likes for us to orchestrate this group into one big group photo. If you're seated in the front, can you stay right there? If you're behind, can you stand up behind this front-seated group? Can you guys come around the sides? We'll get it. This is a photo op for anyone in the audience. If you want to step up and grab a photo of this talented group. Thank you for being a great audience and one more congratulating. You now have three options. You can remain in place, you can sit in the audience, or you can switch yourself.
Yep. So, we're gonna, we're gonna keep going. Congratulations again to all the students this evening. And first up is, are we gonna do the assessment? Excellent. So, Dr. Sam Pino.
As the top credits and follow are amazing students, I will do my best. Congratulations to them all. Thank you to our coaches and our wonderful community because it was quite special. So, every year I come and I do the district assessment update. This year, New York School Report Card has not yet been released. New York State. So, what I will do is, when this is updated, I'll update this piece. But what I also have is, we have access to our assessment results through the OHSD warehouse. I will double-check everything, and then I will make sure it's reposted correctly. So, we adapt. We pivot and adapt, just like we tell our teachers to do. So, New York State testing. I put this on actually the last three years. This is my fourth year in the district. And I put this timeline on and I put that arrow where we are now, June 2026. We have some new regions in the system. We have a new Algebra II in English Language Arts, Earth and Space Science and Life Science Regions Exams. And then in June 2027, Chemistry and Regions Exams. So, last year, New York State, school districts were allowed to give the new science regions in Earth and Space Science and Life Science, and I have Dr. Corina here. So, if I see something wrong, let me know, Dr. Corina. And we did not. We chose to give the existing one, and we did find out it was quite challenging, the new regions, as well as the new science assessments. This is the second year of the New York State Science Exam in Grade 5 and Grade E. So, we did do a few things in science, and I will explain when it's decided to prepare our students. So, the New York State ELA 3-3, we're comparing Locust Valley in green to the region. The region is Nassau County, okay? So, as you can see, we are performing above Nassau County. A little under in Grade 6 ELA, and we will look at that. We have access to, a lot of times, is how a question is asked, maybe in terms of analyze our specific question, and we'll work with the teachers and look at that. Our math in Grades 3-8, again, we are above the region. We are well above the state in their preliminary results that they gave us. Slightly at Grade 3, 70 to 72. It's the first time they've taken a test, but we again will look at that. We are able to look at the released questions. We're able to do some analysis and see how they're being asked the question. In Grade 8, we had 63 students last year who took the Grade 8 Regions and 100% passing, who got Level 3, 4, and 5. We have 33 students take Grade 8 assessment. And it's important to note, we're talking about the 3-8 assessments. Our practitioner participation rate has increased slightly, but really at the middle school level, it's about 15%. At the elementary, it's about 60%. More so in math. Students tend to take the math assessment. It's a little shorter in length than the ELA. Here's that science assessment I was telling you about in terms of New York State. Grade 5, this is the second year of the new assessment, we did do above the region. And in Grade 8, 65% had no regional data on that. If I can put it, unless I get regional data or state data, I'll put that in. We had Grade 8, 78 students get 100%, Level 3, 4, and 5 in the Grade 8 Living Environment Regions. So, what we did when we looked at, we saw difficulty in the science exam is we put some things in place, such as we have an intermediate science teacher this year, Grades 3, 4, and 5, that is split between BI and LVI. And in Grade 6, we also have somebody working dedicated on science in the Grade 16 to really kind of beef up science instruction. And we really want to make sure that we prepare as many students possible in the science. So, this is the way the current, I've had this slide up for the last three years as well. This is the current way you can get a Regions diploma. You can actually get a local diploma, a Regions diploma, or a Regions diploma with advanced designation. This is the way it is currently. And I say that because last year, we spoke about the Blue Ribbon Commission. The Blue Ribbon Commission was brought together from the Regions, and they were asked to look at what are some ways or pathways that students can graduate. Currently, I just mentioned, there's a local diploma, a Regions diploma, and our Regions with advanced designation. What the Gold Ribbon Commission, Blue Ribbon Commission did is they were looking at graduation measures, and now it's known as NY New York Inspires. Now, look at the changes of the state. So, these were the four transformations of New York Inspires. They are, they were tasked to adopt a portrait of a graduate, refine credits and learning experiences, sunset diploma assessment requirements, that's a big one, and move to a one New York State High School diploma. I'm going to preface by saying, they have not voted on this yet. These are all things that they are talking about, but they are important when we frame our conversation and plan. So, these are slides directly from New York Inspires, and I'm sharing them again because it really will frame our future conversations. So, installations fall 2025 to the summer of 2027. That's where we are. In July, New York State adopted a portrait of a graduate. Locust Valley, we have been in really good shape. We have currently a profile of a graduate that was actually adopted and presented to the board my first year here, in the year 2223. So, what we have to do is, we're tasked with, we're going to honor that work, and as a district, we're already meeting, and we're going to make sure it aligns to New York State. So, we're in really good shape with that piece of NY Inspires. The second piece is learning expectations. They are yet to release prioritized reformatted learning standards with guidance. We're waiting. They have done some standards updates, but we really haven't had too much guidance. They have done some standards updates, but we really haven't had too much guidance. Require instruction on financial literacy and climate education. We all knew about financial literacy. The climate piece is kind of the newer piece. We're still waiting on information on that. And we released details on new credit requirement and cohort phasing. I sound like a broken record. We still are waiting for information on this. But it's important for you to know, again, as it frames our future discussions, that these things are happening. And support networks. SED will continue work groups and advisory panels and continue to communicate the information that's not available yet. No, I sound smart, yeah, apologies. But it does get really frustrating when you want to plan into thoughtful planning with our team. The initial implementation, this is what we're talking about. Fall 2027 to summer 2029. This is where that one diploma comes in. Now, there is like misinformation out there. Right now, even my own son will say, look, there's gonna be no more Regions. That's not true. Their Regions will still be there. We believe there will be a pathway that you can take and there'll be multiple pathways to graduate. So, again, we're working, trying to decipher and make plans when we're not exactly sure where we're going. So, we're really trying to try true, really good instructional techniques. But with the goal in mind of, these things may change and we're gonna have to adjust with them. Diploma assessments. So, they're gonna sunset assessment requirements for all students. Again, it might be a different pathway for students. Some might be, they're thinking maybe it'll be something with the SEAL. It's the SEAL of Civic Readiness, it's the SEAL of Literacy. We're not sure, but we believe there'll be some different pathways for students. Learning expectations, refine credit, expand ways students can earn credit. And again, the support networks. Maybe a CTE pathway that might be available. We're so lucky, we hired Mr. Kava. We're talking about CCTE, Mr. Kava last, so I'm like, we have Mr. Kava, we have some background in that. So, again, our district is in good shape because why? We're talking about things and we're trying to plan. Scaling up, but it's gonna be a cohort phasing. Right now, we were, Dr. Turnout and I were just at a meeting. They believe it's gonna be the cohort of 2029. They think maybe the fifth graders, but this could change. That's what's, you know, that's what gets frustrating. A new statewide transcript. And again, the support networks. So, again, these are different phasing. I don't know, 2029 just seems so far away, but it goes quick. This is the overall timeline. And again, I don't mean to be boring or kind of push this, push the topic, but when we plan and we're gonna go into budget planning, we instructional plan, we always need to think about what's coming down the road so that we can be thoughtful. Back to the assessment results. So, with that, here are New York State Regions Exams. We are above the region in everything, the chemistry. So, we have to work on chemistry. Not too far below, we're at 79% and the region's at 81%. But as we always do, we always look to get better. We always look to see where we can improve. But our students who do, overall, performing really well on the New York State Regions. This is a new slide I added this year. I'm sorry, because now it's longer and I didn't realize we were gonna use this law. But it's interesting because these are the elected exams that students choose to take. And in terms of like the mandated ones for a regular Regions Diploma, these are the ones they would take to get the Advanced Designation piece. So, overall, the performance of Locust Valley, they performed at or above the county in most regions, especially strong in Geometry, Algebra II, and Physics. We have really strong participation in Nassau County. Like in Geometry, we have 89% versus 77% participation and 96% versus 91%. Locust Valley, students performed county averages in Physics. Chemistry passing was slightly below the county average, though their participation rate remained strong. So, our advanced studies. We offer a lot for a small school. We have 173 students enrolled in taking AP classes, 144 enrolled in IB classes, 40 enrolled in dual enrollment classes, 39 students at Barry Tech, and seven at Roosevelt in Long Island High School of School of the Arts. Here is our AP results for the courses that we offer. Again, Locust Valley in green. In most of the AP courses that we offer, our students really perform at or above the region. We definitely have to look at calculus and do some work there. We definitely have to look at how those students are performing in calculus. I know Ms. Nina and I talked about maybe looking at some professional development opportunities, really kind of digging deep into some of the tests and some of the questions. We have given the students the opportunity to sign up for AP exams if they're not, even if the course is not offered. I can only report on students five or more who take the test. So that we don't, that's as New York State rules, so you can't identify students. So, these are students who sign up to take the class, to take the test, but are not necessarily in the course. It's really interesting to note that our US History kids, I think Mrs. Chineski said it was like 37 last year, and they really did a nice job. They, their average was a 3.75 versus New York State is a 3.42. And the global is a 3.3. Our Board of Education had asked us some longitudinal data on the curriculum committee. So, I, myself and Mrs. Chineski, we were trying to chat and figure out like what some interesting data points would be. We looked at the number of AP students with scores three or more on a test. I love seeing an upper trajectory, it just makes me happy, but at that, we report what we report. But also our AP scholars, these are the number of students who got three or more on three or more exams. And I think there's a few more different distinctions that we're honoring tonight. Here are IB results. In some areas, we did better, in some, we did not. And we are always looking to improve our instruction. I will tell you, we've had amazing conversations with our staff, with our administrators, from our administrative teams, looking at observations, to what we see in lessons, to our teachers, to what makes really good best practice. I was invited into a great theory of knowledge class and I was blown away from what I saw. With the, I did, for more longitudinal data, we looked at the percent of IB students with scores of four or more. And we also, I shared the IB diploma candidates, that candidates, diplomas, students who actually got an IB diploma. It fluctuates. And it also fluctuates, some years we have a larger class size and some we have a smaller class size. So, that really does take a factor as well. So, I'm gonna pause for a minute before I do the NWA assessments. Mrs. Thiemus, should I talk a little bit about like what we're talking about since I'm talking about testing? So, I'm gonna pause with the NWA because of the VAOE Curriculum Committee, we had a really interesting meeting in the day. And I'm gonna start by, at the end of last year, Dr. Turnout had said to me, we really have to look at all our programs. And I said, yes, agree. So, we have conversations, we have goal meetings at the end of the school year. And I have them with all principals. And we had, we basically framed it, especially with the middle school and high school, but all other principals, we say, how do we best prepare kids? So, at the elementary level, what are we doing to best prepare kids for the middle school? At the middle school level, what are we best preparing kids to do for the high school? At the high school level, what are we doing to best prepare kids for college beyond the workplace life? So, we framed that in our goals meetings. And we were also tasked, our middle school principal, to look at enrollments, having best prepared students for the high school, as well as the possible pathways of New York State, which we're still trying to figure out. We also asked the high school principal, we have all these advanced studies, how we look at the advanced studies as a whole? Look at the enrollment that we have. And again, how can we make some recommendations with the idea of enrollments getting smaller and we're gonna have these multiple pathways? It's difficult, right? Why I spent the time on the pathways is, until we know the true pathways for New York State, it's really hard to pick the trajectory. But it's the conversations, the rich conversations, the looking at data, that we really are finding really valuable. And the ideas on the table. If we weren't looking at this stuff, you'd say, Dr. Thiemus, what are you doing? We have to look at this stuff. We have to look at what we're doing to, again, best prepare ourselves. We have, one of our largest classes is our junior class of 170 students, okay? There'll be seniors next year. Then we have smaller class sizes of 120, 140. Our current fourth grade is 104. 104 students. When the 170 lead and the 104 comes up, if we don't plan for that, that's a problem. So, that's why I want to take the time to really frame out that we're trying to be thoughtful. We're not trying to freak anybody out. We're trying to be really thoughtful with our team, our amazing instructional leaders, who I thank you so much for being here, our teachers, who I thank you so much for being here, and with our Board of Education, who have been very encouraging and patient as we kind of go through this. So, that is why I paused here, because I think it's really important. We had a conversation at our Board of Education Committee, our first one, about where are we with this? And the middle school has some ideas, some recommendations that they're throughout. We don't have to do things like right now because the fifth grade is a pretty robust size. We, I think it's a 141. But when we get to 104, it's tough. We also have to work with the shared staff of the middle school, high school. There's a lot of factors that we have to figure out. Shared staff, scheduling, and the pathways. So, again, I wanted to take the time, and I apologize, and I know it's late and it's been, but I definitely wanted to kind of frame why these conversations are happening, why they're so important, and that we're working on it. Know that we're working on it. And we have like the best people to work on it, so that we need to know. So, NWA is an adaptive assessment that is not tied to New York State, that is just for us. It's an external assessment that our students take in reading and math. They take it three times a year in Grades 8 through 6, twice in Grades 7 and 8. And it gives formative assessment information to our teachers. It's another piece of the puzzle. We just don't use that only. We use that as a piece of the puzzle. What does that say? Does it flap? Did child go down? Really important, especially at the elementary level. When we think kids are going along and all of a sudden content gets more difficult, they get more rigorous, we have to watch comprehension, we have to work on that. So, that's a tool in our toolbox. What I did was, I looked at the spring RIT score with the norms. The green is us. We are above the national norms in reading and in math. We kind of even out. And it is harder as the students get up in the grades, the closer, the higher they get, they make less growth. But we want to make sure that they grow. We want to make sure that they maintain. So, those are all important conversations that we've had. Parent reports. When I, I think it was last year or the year before, two years ago, we put the parent reports on eSchool Portal after each administration. The window is still open. We are getting a few makeups. A lot of colds happens in the fall this year. So, once they are done, they will be on eSchool Portal. You'll get an email from me or a parent square from me. And I just wanted to highlight, you saw them here. We have great kids. We have amazing teachers and honestly, a very special community. This is our graduates from 2025. I'm not gonna read it all to you. But it's really special that, you know, we have so much, we have so many kids. 78% entered 4-year colleges/universities, 11 2-year, eight listed in the military or enrolled in vocational programs and joined the workforce. I say it every year, we're proud of every single kid, whatever path they choose. We just want to make sure that they are the best prepared for any path they choose. I feel like I'm so tired. I feel terrible that I keep talking, so I'm gonna go really quick. I mind my goals to the Board of Education goals. And it's easy when you have continuous academic achievement. I came here, I said, the reason we're here is for instruction. All the other stuff is great, but we want kids to learn. So, we are gonna continue to strengthen our reading and writing instruction across all schools. The work we did in the elementary, my elementary teachers, I spent two years with you. I adore you. You work so hard. We're gonna update and refine our curriculum maps to ensure coherence and alignment. When I started here, they said, we want everybody kind of doing the same thing. We have beautiful curriculum maps. And again, I credit our teachers. Hold our speculation meetings. We want to have more elementary to middle school, middle school to high school. That's really important, ensuring smooth academic transitions. We want to review and align the course work visions and sequences to prepare our students for advanced coursework and the New York pathways. We want to refine our MTSS practices to ensure consistent intervention systems. We're gonna be, we're actually doing branching lines now, Mr. Pack, that's probably working on that in the back. Branching lines will be a way for us to track our interventions, things we're doing, to make sure that we're not, no one is falling through the cracks. We're gonna be embedding writing and communication skills through all subjects. I had a great conversation with Mr. Teecommenter, we talked about exit interviews and get kids speaking more, getting them out in the community more. These are things we want. This ties into leader and main. So, it all fits together. How do our kids see themselves? They see themselves as leaders? We want them to see, I want to see the kids seeing themselves as leaders. I want our teachers to see themselves as leaders, our parents, everybody. We have wonderful instructional leaders here, I hope they do, but that is really important. Okay. And debt and purpose-driven citizens. We want to really look at the financial literacy requirement. I applaud our middle school principal. He's already implemented financial literacy at the middle school level. He's added advisory. Our high school principal already has added financial literacy. These are things that we're heavily gained. We purposely did these things. We're looking at scheduling, we're looking at great things. Expand our pathways, promote college career and civic readiness. Integrate the profile of graduate skills, leadership, responsibility, collaboration, problem solving into the curriculum and progression practice, which fits into leader and main. So, we want to make sure our kids are ready for anything. And that's it. Small, small task. I thank you all for listening, because I know it's a long night, I really appreciate it. And I thank you, the Board of Education. And if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them for you.
Hey, Jeanne, I got one quick question. Is there any specifically on why the chemistry scores are so skewed below the average?
You know, it's interesting. Chemistry is one of those things where we look at like every year, I think, right? Mrs. Corina, we definitely want to go a little deeper with that. There's not a specific thing I'm gonna point to, you know, like right now, but we definitely are looking at questioning, our vocabulary, how, you know, what's going on all around. And even prior, what happens? How do we prepare our kids best? We really are trying, which is why we introduced 3-5 science person, the 6th grade science person, content science teachers, we get a staff, but they're like certified in science. So, we've really tried to build some of that background, content, knowledge, and vocabulary. So, hopefully we'll see a difference in our kids and we'll continue working on it. Because we want scientists, thinkers.
So, you pointed out that there's a nice kind of upper trajectory trend with AP scores. Is there anything, any categories in there that you guys can pull out of the plan that, and then even apply it to the other, you know, whether it's, I know there's like ARPS and apples, but just like, some like best practices that can be pulled out from that that can be applied to these other tests that we're?
We look at best practices and it's funny, Mrs. Stare and I, we play in some professional development in the middle school, specifically on that, like what are some best practices in comprehension? What is metacognition, thinking about thinking, questioning? Dr. Corina is constantly asking like, what are some of the questions on the test? Sometimes it's the way we ask things. And we really want to get kids thinking at deeper level. And that's not always easy. They need practice at it. And I think we just have to give a little bit more practice at those deeper level questions, really exposing them to our vocabulary. It was, you know, we want our kids to read a lot of times. I see with my own, he's not watching, but like, it's a struggle to get kids to sit, focus, read, take the time to practice those type of questions on any of the exams. It really is, it's something that you have to kind of really sit there and... It really is, it's something that you have to kind of really sit there and the kids have a hard time on test. Or, like me, sometimes I'll look at my son, and his studying is, we look at YouTube or re-taught lesson, how somebody else teaches it, like they study differently. And I'm thinking, why are you on your phone? He's like, I'm studying. It's different, and we have to kind of embrace different learning styles, and really kind of work to our learners and see, prepare them for everything. Just a small task, Mrs. Allison, we'll just, you know, keep working on it.
Dr. Santino, I just wanted to thank you and the team, and the team of teachers that are even here this evening with us, because I think the one thing that you said, that I think we really do have to bring in our local staff, is having those really in-depth discussions at the table, where the educators have come together under your leadership, under the principal's leadership, the teachers that come to the table, that come with ideas, and really help us look at those exams and formulate best practices. And those discussions are so imperative for everything that we do every day, so I really want to thank everyone in this school district, because that is something new. Last year, we reflected back on how much professional development we did, and I know just from, you know, speaking with teachers, when they feel better about their practices and they are also thinking, apparently, and we're thinking differently, we see the whole professional business. It does take time, but it takes those really in-depth conversations, so I applaud everyone.
I agree, we have an amazing group, we have some incredible problem solvers here, and they really kind of break things to the table, I know that they're shy about coming to the table, Mrs. Bennett. And that's what you need, you need people to come and bring, come to the table with ideas, how do we make it better? That's always how we frame it, how do we make it better? And I think when we do that, and then we have to, we can see all the outside factors, the state, they're thinking, what's the best environment we have that we can create for kids, that they can all grow, learn, and continue to learn. So it sounds like we want lifelong learners. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Continue on with the superintendent. Dr. Turnout.
So we're going to move to board reports, audit committee.
Thanks, George. The audit committee met on November seventh to address the priorities we use internal audit report. And again, that's the audit report where the district looks to assess its risk to back traditional losses internally. And this, this year's internal audit was reviewed by our handball company, and we pick a topic every year to assess risk, and this particular year we focused on payroll. The audit of payroll focused on testing payment accuracy and adherence to established protocols. The auditor randomly selected a single fifteen employees to review their payments in its open documentation, including party agreements, new we policies, personnel files, payroll records. The results are that all selected payments were substantiated and had adequate supporting documentation. A separate review of key administrators, but those who have the highest risk of that overall, I found no vacancies with a salary paid, mediated through the process. Just briefly, another area of focus that was discussed was the technology, and just to note that the audit is, you can hear that this is still a growing risk, we should several recommendations specifically related to cybersecurity, compliance, and governance, and the district is currently actively working on implementing all of the recommendations.
Thank you. Budget and finance committee, no report. Curriculum committee?
Thank you, George. The curriculum committee met on November thirteenth, and we had a wonderful group join us, I want to thank all of the administrators who joined us that day, it's really helpful when we're talking about topics specifically for this meeting, an update on advanced studies, and our middle school programs and honors that may include our administrators in the conversation. I do want to preface to the public that this was a very preliminary conversation. So any work that's done by the board, anytime we look at any area of the district, whether it's academic, athletics, arts, no matter what it is, it starts with data. Dr. Santino has a great book, Data, so she's got a team that really goes prepared, and the goal is for us to do assessments across whatever area that we're looking at, and then start to break down areas that we can improve. And so I really appreciate all of the administrators coming to the table, we had a very lengthy discussion on the middle school group. Really, one of our biggest issues within the district is how do we maintain adequate class sizes within cohorts? We have ITT classes, we have audish classes, we have regular general education classes, making sure that there's even a distribution among all of them, that we are offering coursework that's at level for the students that are in them, and then we are going to continue the conversation to see if there's any improvement. Something that was discussed was the possibility of having teachers have more of a role in recommending students into the arts courses. And so I know Mrs. Sterro is still working with Dr. Santino on that, and we'll hopefully over the next few weeks, not a month or so, we'll be able to come back to the board with any recommendations at the middle school level, as far as the high school is concerned. As you can see, unfortunately, we just got a lot of the data, and we're still waiting for data tonight, so having conversations on the high school, AP, IP, et cetera, is a bit difficult. We are also faced with the challenge of the idea of what's going on with the region's exams, we don't know. As a board, a lot of the communication that we've received from New York State has been, along with the ribbon commission, that they are looking to, I want to say get rid of regions, but that's kind of what the message has been, is that regions are on their way out, and that different type of portfolio assessments, and different types, we've heard them off, all different sorts of ways in which they are going to assess students, we are left just as that, hopefully, I think, as our administrators, and are waiting for direction. So I think tonight, along with the curriculum committee meeting, was a good start to understand, okay, what are the offerings that we have? If we're offering something, are we doing it well? We are, by nature, a district that does not like to say no. We have kids that have so many varied interests, I love that we have so many students that are going to very tech, and going to school of the arts, that's something that we will absolutely 100% continue, but with that also comes challenges of how many children are actually involved in the courses that we have. And so I, again, we will continue that conversation, hopefully, in the next curriculum committee meeting. Those are open to the public, you're not able to comment, but you can join the meeting and sit and view the meetings, we encourage participation in that way. I also want to thank Dr. Farina for joining us, we started a new, a new way of introducing coursework with the Board of Education, so our administrators will come and present to the curriculum committee, they will then make recommendations to the Board of Education. And one of the things that was just discussed by Dr. Santino was, when we have areas of opportunity, we need to fix it. And Dr. Farina came with a wonderful opportunity, an idea regarding math, and, excuse me if I get this wrong, Dr. Farina, but we're looking to really fill a gap of helping students advance between Algebra I and Geometry. So as we all know, math especially is one of the subjects where if you don't get ninth grade math, it's going to be very difficult to get tenth grade math and eleventh grade math, you don't switch to a different topic the next year. And so it really is making sure that if kids are not advancing as quickly and effectively as they should through the math courses, that there is some course that can kind of fill the gap, to get them up to speed, get them back on track, and get them moving so that by the time they hit eleventh grade, they're back in the cycle. And so she has proposed a new course that will basically be a half year of Algebra I and a half year of Geometry, so that when they finish that year, they can go back into the Geometry sequence. We do have a course like this already in existence, I think it's in between Geometry I and II.
And Algebra II.
Geometry and Algebra II, and it's deemed very successful. So we're looking to implement that model, I would love to just get any feedback from the Board of Education, or if I missed anything from the committee, I'd love to make a recommendation to move forward with the course. Great. And we'll get back with, I think I've covered everything. Oh, the IB testing, the IB and AP testing fees, we will have to have a discussion on it, I think, maybe for the next September meeting, I think this will be discussed. That's all for Dr. John, thank you.
Thank you. Facilities committee, we had a meeting this past month that was dedicated, that's, you know, predominantly about the parking lot, as we continue to try to shape our project to make sure we come in within budget. We had excellent design that I think improves the parking lot here at the middle school, high school, makes it considerably safer, it can accommodate all the different types of traffic that we have coming in between parents and buses. Hot off the presses, just before the meeting, we received some feedback from state and their architectural review, so we will schedule a meeting in short order with Eric and Karen and the team and the board committee to review that, make sure that we're still getting the design that we really hoped for. Policy committee?
Sure. The policy committee met on November, excuse me, November sixth. One of the goals of policy this year is to review. A lot of times our policy meetings are inundated with policies that have to be reviewed, that have to be updated, whether it's change from the state, law, et cetera. A lot of our policies, I would say eighty percent, I dare to say, go untracked year over year. A lot of times they have updated language, updated modalities, we've seen, you know, the reference CDs and VHS over the years. So the goal is really to get through larger trends of policies. You're going to see for the remainder of the year, up for approval is just review of policy. Sometimes it will not change, but the review date will be updated in the system. We are working on the zeros and the one hundreds, and we'll hopefully get into the two hundreds and three hundreds as well. And we also are looking to eliminate policies that are A, not required, and B, really belong more in practice than policy. And so a lot of times policies remain that might have invested practice, but really are, should be reserved for that and not for our policy goal. And so that is what we have for this meeting.
Thank you. Public relations and communications committee?
Sure, thanks, George. I'm going to take everyone back to September for a moment, if you don't mind. The PR committee wanted to just take a moment to share some heartfelt things, I'm sure I'm expressing sentiments from the board as well, for everyone who helped write this year's Homecoming to life, from Dr. Turnout to Dr. Turner, from our amazing Falcon Pride organization, our dedicated coaches, full display tonight, our building leaders, our staff and our teachers, thank you for giving your time and your talent. I just got chucked up, and your heart to our students and our community. Also, obviously, to our incredible athletes, our football players, cheerleaders, kickline band, and the countless volunteers who kept, thanks, running behind the scenes. You brought energy, spirit, and unity to the entire day. And yes, another thank you to the football team for winning, that was a highlight that day, we'll take it. I'd also like to give a special shout out to our communications manager, Tom Carosa, whose creativity and engaging social media content brought Homecoming to life for anyone who visited our channels. It was a fantastic campaign that captured the joy and pride of the day. When we started talking earlier in September about the goals of the PR committee, we really talked about the need to enhance the value proposition of this district, and just how unique and special we are and all that we have to offer. We talked about Homecoming and the need for really going earlier, like bringing this experience to the elementary schools, and engaging our students in this district from K to 12, you know, hang on, stay with us for the whole journey, that's what we'd like to see more of. So I believe we really achieved that as a team, the pep rallies were a success, the design contests with the jerseys, the creativity and the commitment to execution was on full display. So just bravo to all of you, thank you, it was noticed and we appreciate it, and I thought the day of was just exceptional. And last but not least, I'm going to have to tangent, I want to thank our students, parents, and community members who participated in every way. Sometimes the outside heroes in this process, but including your help on the floats and everything else that you did. I loved the Hawaiian theme, I found that so much fun, they were so colorful and brought a lot of vibrance to the day. We met again last week where we spent time with our agency partners, as well as Dr. Turnout, Dr. Turner, and Dr. Camalos. We will also plan to spend time with our other department heads, and work together to continue to develop our communications and content plans for the district thoughtfully and strategically. I'm sure most of you felt the focus on athletics in the fall, and as we move into the winter quarters, the team is focused on music excellence, the arts, student life and culture. And in the spring, we want to bring forth more of what we're doing at leader and main, and of course, all the great stories within our special education community, and highlight the amazing students in our special education program, and the great work they do every day. A continuous thread throughout all of this content, which feels appropriate to say tonight, is academic excellence. So we will remain laser-focused on helping to position our district as truly robust and differentiated, and as a truly robust and differentiated educational offer. We're also talking about ideas to better engage our community, and our exceptional teachers, our building leaders, coaches, as well as working through ideas to create more visibility for the multitude of athletic events in the district. So if anyone has any questions or ideas, please feel free to contact me, Lindsay Fox or Christina Tomlinson, we comprised the committee this year. Christina and Lindsay, if there's anything you'd like to add?
No, no, all right, yeah.
Any questions from the board? Thank you.
Thank you. Technology committee? No report. Any other report from board trustees?
Yeah, I got something. I got a query about, you know, in June, July this year, we hired Lady Cavis for a specific reason, and it's been around four and a half, five months, we've received no update about it, we have no idea of how much total money's have been spent in the hiring and use of her work. While she's been enrolled, we really don't understand what the scope is in terms of top paper, and I believe we've asked repeatedly for trusty things to ask for, and I would like to request by the next meeting that we have, at least what total money's have been spent, and to understand a little bit more about it.
Moving into unfinished business, we have morning outdoor play.
At our last Board of Education meeting on October fifteenth, we were charged to pilot morning play. We valued student movement, and our goal was to both. We first wanted to pilot morning play, but we wanted to also incorporate more movement into our classrooms. As EI had experience with this, our principal, Mr. McAlany, started it out that following Monday, October twentieth. I would like to take this opportunity to let our community know that when the playground was expanded at AMP, the original fence was taken down, therefore, this time, we cannot hold morning play there, because we do not have the area we can support. For that, be discussed at a later time. It's important to mention that classes begin in all of our elementary schools at nine AM. We have many activities that take place in the morning that we're really proud of, and our four elementary principals would like to further describe this to the Board of Education. I'm going to invite them up to the podium, to invite our four remarkable elementary principals, just to describe some of the things that we are doing. just to describe some of the things that we are doing and to give a better picture to the community of what our mornings look like.
Thank you, Dr. Turnout, to the board, always being an opportunity to speak. Certainly speaking for the primary buildings, doors are opening at 8:40, and it is quiet before the kids come in, the smiles on their faces. And, you know, at both buildings, as the kids come in, they're going either straight to the all purpose room at 8:40, mingling with kids in their classes and the grade levels. We do have a number of students that are taking part in the breakfast programs. We even have a separate space just because so many kids are eating. And at Abo, primarily, the follow suit with what Mr. Cohen is doing, it's almost like it's holding a morning meeting every day in their all purpose room. And, you know, by 8:55, the students are picked up, they're headed to their classrooms because many of our classes do have specials and not engage in morning meeting. But that idea of movement is continuing throughout the day, whether it's movement breaks, dance breaks. You have students who are taking tours of spaces, whether it's the kitchens. Sometimes you see math classes are actually going on in the foyer to get kids up, moving around. We do value small group work. We do value station work. So kids are constantly moving throughout the day. When I started here six years ago, that was right when the doors opened back up. And I do think that the idea of the movement break and having kids move throughout the day, if it wasn't valued then, it certainly was at that point. And our teachers, we both agree, continue to do that from the second class of store. It's certainly busy right when they get in, eating a healthy breakfast, getting a class, but it is very social once that morning bell begins. So I've got to turn it over to LBI and some of the great work that you're doing.
Thank you, Mr. Simon. Good evening, everyone. I'm Kathleen Riley, Principal of LBI. I like to speak a little bit about the demographics in my building every morning so you all get a sense of what happens at LBI in the morning and what I've witnessed in my building for the last four years. We start opening the doors at 8:30 for breakfast. Monday and Wednesday, starting in February, I'm going to have 113 students going to orchestra in the morning. On Tuesday and Thursday, we have 47 band members. And on Fridays, we have chorus. And that starts at 8:15. So students come in for that. They come in for extra help at 8:15. They also come in for breakfast, which, as you know, is free under the New York State law. And they come in for that. So we know where our kids are at that time. I'm a big believer in opportunity interest for our students. When it comes to morning play, my key factor is, and I love the discussion, is safety first. That's my key issue. When you come to Locust Family Intermediate, you go the main entrance. In order to have outdoor play, the students would have to walk to the basement, go to the gym, drop off their backpacks, go outside. It is about a 20-minute time period that morning play would actually be held. I'm not saying it cannot be, but my concern is interest, excuse me, safety. We have right now two monitors that are available to maintain that. I don't know if that would be enough to maintain that safety, and that's a concern. When it comes to mobility, when it comes to what our kids get in the opportunity of the day, we have PE three times a week. Morning meetings have the kids up and about in the carpet, moving. Today, I saw a beautiful lesson on Skip County where every student in that class got up and did an activity with Skip County, moving. Many opportunities at BI and LBI allow our students to have outdoor activities, regardless of the hour lunch that they already have. But also, when it comes to teachers giving the kids the opportunity in the spring and fall to have outdoor classroom settings in both buildings, enormous amount of pigtails where teachers take advantage and get them outside. So I just wanted you to have an understanding of BI and LBI and what we do. And thank you for this opportunity. And by the way, next year, LBI will be 100 years old. I am going to start plugging that, everyone, and I would love help on a committee with Dr. Turnout's approval. Thank you all. She's so mad. We've already talked about this. We've already been through some black and white photos, to say the least, and have a couple of little plans. So we really wanted to open this up to the school board. One consideration that, you know, for me, just doing my due diligence, and especially in light of some of the circumstances that we witnessed this week, we had an emergency meeting this morning, all of us at 11:00 AM, and really wanted to go over where our AEDs are, who's trained in our buildings, and what it would look like if a student was out in the field for us. We have never practiced that. It's not in our current response plan that we have, that we have submitted to the state because it wasn't part of our program. We would like to, you know, certainly intensely look at this and make sure that we have the appropriate personnel in place so we can, to the best of our ability, look at every parent and tell them that we know that we have provided the safest environment for them. We will be ordering AEDs for our elementary schools. They do come in. So one important factor that really, Dr. Turner, and I want to thank her for her professionalism and her knowledge base in this. But as we're working on DSH's law, which comes into effect in January 2026, I've learned a lot. One thing that really sat, I want to say deeply with me, is when she reviewed with our team yesterday that it should only be two minutes to an AED machine. One minute there, one minute back. So every time we're looking forward now, we want to make sure that that guideline is in place as we look at alternative spaces for our students and grow our programs. And that was really important that I heard that here. And I'm so joyful that she's going to be working with Tyler Robinson, and we're going to get the appropriate recommendations on where they should be located and what extra ones that we do need to move, you know, to put into place. So I wanted to open this up to the Board of Education to, you know, ask questions. I do want to let the board know that I did speak with our insurance carrier, Nicer, just to review and make sure that we're always in compliance because our insurance company, we do that, you know, we check with them. They highly recommend it, and of course, these are guidelines, but this is what they recommend to all of our schools. Students that are in grades three through five should have a ratio of no more than 20 to one. Students that are four years old to seven years old should have a ratio of no more than 15 to one. So those are important guidelines for us to know as we look at the personnel that would be supervising our students. They also did mention to us that while we have students with special needs, that we should be very cognizant of what those needs are and making sure that we have enough personnel. They, you know, basically said it should be no more than seven students in many cases, seven to 12. And one thing that I did want to highlight because it was so impressive, and Dr. Cavallus had set this up for our wonderful staff in the elementary. All of our elementary teachers met. And Cheryl Gattiano, who's our occupational therapist, as well as a brand new hire, Rachel McAdams, our physical therapist. Now, we have a full-time physical therapist on staff, led an unbelievable after-school professional development class for all of our elementary teachers. And what they did is they provided fine and motor skill activities for each teacher to incorporate into their classroom deck, into their lessons. They gave them the skill sets of what they should look for, quick things that we can do to build those fine motor skills, as we know. And the board, I commend all of you for really helping us in this balancing of technology. When we balance technology appropriately, we see that our fine motor skills do obviously increase, and that's what we want. They had talked about different mediums with kids, not just pencils, but using chalk, and how different text titles worked with children to develop those skills, and how indeed they needed to work on the core. That was the one message that was very loud and clear. All building principals were there to really continue this effort as we move forward and really upgrading some even of our equipment and getting kids to sometimes even how they stand, even how they sit. So if you're doing a buck club, for instance, you don't need to sit and talk. You can stand and talk. And how much different that is for children and activating the burn unit. So I felt that that was a really good way that we're starting to demonstrate that balance of less technology, more fine motor skills. And I wanted to share that with you because that was, we just had that professional development. What was that? Tuesday, this week? Yes. So it seems like it's later in the week. So I'm going to open it back up to the Board of Education, and we'll be happy to answer any of the questions you have.
So just my question, you know, so after hearing the recommendation and looking at what the assessment was for safety, you know, are you planning on looking back on the safety plan and incorporate the open play and AED protocols on boards in the future and see what our staff line is on and what our needs?
So we had our initial meeting. We're going to continue to have meetings. We have already in line, as I said, certain consultants that will be working with us. But as we can't put anything in place tomorrow because that would require personnel changes or personnel additions, and we don't currently have that right now.
Not asking for an immediate change, but looking for a plan going forward, which is pretty important.
That's what we're suggesting. That given the information we have now, the winter is coming. Typically, students are cold. When I was there the other day, Mr. McAlany's building, a lot of kids wanted to come inside. It was cold. It was windy on the field. We did let many of them come in. So as we look forward, we're going to look through incorporating all those safety plans, updating them if necessary, and coming up with additional information. But we need to hear it from more of the experts.
I just want to thank everybody for joining us tonight. And no matter what these kids are doing in the morning, I know they're starting their day off in a great environment, so I appreciate that. Thank you, Scott, for piloting the outdoor play. It has been going on in Abo for as long as anybody can remember. So it is always an amazing thing to see when you drive down and you see all the kids out there in the morning. I will stress for me that I can appreciate the safety concerns. I know they're very important, and that has to be our number one. And I appreciate the conversations surrounding movement. But one of the main tenants for me that really inspired the morning play is number one, unstructured play. It's that time where kids can go out and be just kids. There is no activity. There is no prior reason. They're there to just interact and play, get facilities out, get some energy out, move their bodies however they seem fit. I have been championing this since my first day on the board, where fortunately, we were able to increase the amount of time for recess. When I started, it was 20 minutes a day for elementary. One of the recommendations that I, that I've shared with Dr. Turnout was, you know, on the cold days, we'll get cold. And the mornings in Abo days are very windy, is to put them in the gym. Let the kids go to the gym. It's contained. It's a great, it's a great option in our building. Every elementary school has one. Put some vaults out. The other thing that I do want to mention, which I think is us worth looking at and introducing into the conversation is, this time would be the only time for all of our students in elementary to interact with students from different grades. And I think as we see these cohorts get smaller and smaller, to start creating relationships, intergrade, and finding kids that share in their likes and dislikes and activities and sports and so forth would be really important. I think it will help them as they go into middle school. I think it will help to build more community. You know, there's always a group of kids in each grade that play whatever sport they play, but I'm sure they would just as well be able to get out there with some of the other kids in that other grade. And to start creating some friendly faces in the building and knowing these kids, I need, which I think could be incorporated, not just in morning play, in a lot of areas within our curriculum, within our district. I know we did a great program for all these student leaders where they all joined together and came up here. So bravo on that. I think that was amazing. But I really would love to see us come up with a plan on how we can make this work. I would recommend, and you brought up about the fence at AMP, George, and we could bring that back to facilities. I think it would be important. There used to be a fence at AMP. They switched the playground. I don't know what happened to the fence.
I did find out because I wanted, I was curious.
No, myself.
And because we almost like tripled the space for play, I don't know, I wasn't here at that time, the fence was taken down to put this expansive play area, which is fantastic. But I guess there was no discussion about, you know, putting a fence back up.
I mean, I think regardless of morning play or recess, it may be beneficial. I don't know, but maybe we talked to Eric and find an addition to look, think about putting a fence back in the playground. And I would just love to see us come up with some ways that we can get the kids just to relax and have the fun of moving in the morning, indoor, outdoor, hallways, I don't care where they go, but I'd love to see the kids just move. Thank you all.
Any other questions, Thomas? Thank you all very much for coming. Moving on to new business, we have a review of policies. Policies to be revised. Policy number 0100, equal employment and educational opportunity. Policies to be marked as reviewed. 0101, gender neutral single occupancy bathrooms. Policies to be abolished. 0100R, equal employment and educational opportunity regulation. 0200, school district goals and objectives. 0310, evaluation of school board operational procedures. And 0320, evaluation of the superintendent. Do I have a motion? Proceed with these actions. Lauren?
Second.
Matt? All those in favor? It's unanimous. The next item is district-wide safety plan update. We are updating our district-wide safety plan to meet the requirements of the newly enacted DSH's law, which requires a district to have a cardiac emergency response plan. This will be posted for a 30-day public comment period on the district website beginning tomorrow, November 20th, through December 19th, 2025. Any additional comments about this discussion? Okay. The next item, I will be locking this evening, a resolution onto the agenda. Last month, I was served with a petition that was filed to the Commissioner of Education in Albany, an appeal for my removal from the Board of Education. I met necessary requirements and wrote, per the public officer's law, a request for defense and representation. That letter, per the law, goes to our district general counsel, which is represented by Ingrid Smith, as well as the chief administrative officer, or Dr. Turnout, requesting such coverage. I received a response letter from our general counsel, as is the procedure, informing me that I was entitled to said coverage and representation. However, our district council is conflicted out from representing me. As such, they recommended a couple of different attorneys for me to speak to. I spoke to them. I selected counsel that will represent me, and I negotiated with that counsel to represent me at the same rates that Ingrid Smith would charge the district. So it's a fair and reasonable price. The resolution that I'm putting forth asks the board to consider that price, if you will, those bills, and agree that the district will pay those bills. Therefore, whereas George Vasilio has been advised by the district that he is entitled to defense and indemnification, has responded has responded in the matter of the appeal to the Commissioner of Education, brought by Lauren Themis, pursuant to a determination of John Gross Esquire, Chief Lead Law Officer of the Locust Valley School District, that George Vassilio is entitled to such representation and indemnification under the Public Officers' Law of the State of New York. And whereas George Vassilio has chosen Adam Kleinberg Esquire, a partner in the law firm of Gersio and Gersio Esquires, to provide a defense for him at the expense of the district, pursuant to Section 3B of the Public Officers' Law of the State of New York, at the same hourly rate charged by district counsel. Now therefore, be it resolved that upon submission, review, and approval by the Board of Education of reasonable attorney fees and expenses periodically presented for payment by Gersio and Gersio Esquire shall be promptly paid by the district. Do I have a second to that resolution? Matt Barnes? Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstain? Thank you. Is there any other new business to be brought? Moving forward to consent agenda items. Are there any consent agenda items that members would like pulled and voted separately on?
Yes. There is, there is one minute. I would like to remove subject each with a consent agenda. This is the intermunicipal agreement for shared transportation for a disclosure and consent agreement.
10H, you mean?
Yes. Yeah, 10H. Whether this is one bus or 20 buses or one, one event or every day, I made a commitment to the district that we would not enter into any form of regionalization. And I feel like this is a very, pretty slow, uh, year of work.
Are there any other items?
Our presentation, is this item being pulled off the agenda tonight for a discussion? Or is it being pulled for discussion at separate vote?
Discussion at separate vote. So let's, we'll pull that one. And let's say, do I have a motion to approve consent agenda items eight to 12, but for item 10H? Matt? Do I have a second? Christina? All those in favor? It's unanimous. As for item 10H, shall we have discussion? Any comments to make?
Yes. I think what we should do is because the topic of regionalization was brought up, I think we should clarify tonight. I would, I'm seeking the clarification, is 10H, in fact, an agreement based in a New York State-naminated regionalization? Or was it sort of an intra-district shared services agreement? So can you just clarify that, please?
So Mrs. Bonistina, who is in charge of the NYSTEA, was looking to send our students to Calicoon, New York. And Glencoe and Wester Bay have, indeed, would like to partner up with us, which would reduce the cost per student, which our students do pay, to a total of $260 each, because we are splitting the bus with our 12 students and two chaperones. So we just did this as a measure. We try to work with our local school districts. Sometimes we do this in school and in bowling. But if we see an opportunity, the directors of Fine Arts and Music, in this case, when they see an opportunity and they don't have a plethora of students where we can run to our home bus, we try to reach out to our local school districts who would also like to participate with us because we're trying to lower the cost that students would pay for such an endeavor.
So does this have any connection to regional, regionalization? Is this going to be reported back to the state in terms of the regionalization measure? I just want to know if there's a connection to it.
Sure. We have not, nor will we, or take in regionalization. If we were in regionalization, I would be going to Nassau Boise, meeting with other school districts that are part of the regionalization group. I've never been there. We wouldn't do that. We just continue to look ways to save money. Really, that save money for our other district, save money for our students. That's all we're concerned with. And if Mrs. Vega wants to, our council, who drove the paper.
I'm actually, uh, some type of patient on this board tonight. It's not the actual, the actual agreement. Because Ingrid Smith represents Locust Valley and Glencoe, we're drawn both by the agreement, we have an obligation to slow the representative order and not advise, we're honest with you, but that provides, which is what it does, it provides for the template, any negotiation of the terms, you can be subject to a independent council or come into that agreement yourself. We're capable of providing, so if this is a agreement upon tonight, Glencoe, Locust Valley, and Ingrid Smith consigned, that we dispose to the parents in the public. And then contract or we'll come to work to, for a vote separately. So that's what's reported, not the actual agreement, but that law is technically a background.
So just in other words, just to clarify, we're not really voting on the actual issue tonight. We're just voting on her disposal to us. All right, we have an issue, we're going to circle back to it later.
And I can appreciate the commentary tonight, but I just want to reiterate that when you start sharing services, we are acting in a regionalization capacity. We may not be formally in it, we may not be forced into it, but my goal is, and in addition, I do want to mention that we've brought in a consultant group to do an audit of our transportation system to find ways to save money. I know it's a lengthy process, but we are awaiting those results. We are awaiting a recommendation as a Board of Education. And again, when, you know, if we have sports teams, where we are acting as one team, of course, those students should be riding together. They're one sports team. But without a recommendation and the entirety of the transportation department, which is an exorbitant amount of money, I think my suggestion is that we keep our students and give them a bus without having to start sharing buses. What this will cause, in my opinion, is we share a bus with us, we're sharing buses for every class. There's a lot of activities, there's a lot of things kids go do, and then they'll be sharing our classrooms. And that is something that I believe to protect the district.
I think, Laura, I thank you for bringing that up because I certainly share, I think please the board share that concern, given we stood together with however many other districts, more than 20, in standing up to New York State saying we would not, we do not want to participate in regionalization. We wanted them to explain clearly that it would be on a voluntary basis. And a key tenet of this whole argument was that we've said to New York State, we do share services with other districts based on our preferences, our needs, we make the decision. So I just wanted to make sure that that was in fact what we were doing here. And that the template or legal agreement is sort of a, just a way we codify and protect from an insurance perspective, legal perspective, sharing a transport to open up opportunities for students where I hear a small number of students in our district want to participate. So that's why I thought it was important to clarify that this is not a regionalization initiative. I'm hearing that it's not. I'm hearing that it's not. So I think we stay unified, I'm wanting to protect the interests of the district, protect our district, our classrooms, all of that. But again, I just wanted to make sure I had my questions answered because I live in Shore.
Sounds like there'll be an agreement that'll be out, that'll be out speed as well for us to discuss more.
And would we discuss that would just be helpful to understand kind of the cost savings that you guys are looking, just out of the financial picture here, that you guys are trying to keep your eye on?
The trip is in January. Sorry. The trip is in January. Maybe also what other shared buses we have currently in the district? What, when our students are on a bus, what do the districts have to do?
So the motion to, before I, the motion to entertain consent agenda item 10H, this item, to be very clear, is us approving the district, if you will, to acknowledge your conflict with Glencoe and to proceed with the drafting of an agreement if we so can approve that agreement in December. Is that correct?
That's correct. This is not the actual agreement itself, it's just the first step.
Do I have a motion to entertain that? Christina? Second? Holly? All those in favor? Opposed? Consent item passes. Next item, public comment. Mr. Michael Lamb?
Good evening, everybody.
I'm sorry, sir.
Sure.
Please go to the podium, thank you. State your name and your address.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Michael Lamb, I reside at 312 East Lane of the street. And I'm here tonight as the proud parent of a junior and a seventh grader. I want to begin by thanking the administration, the faculty, and the staff for everything they do to make this a happy, healthy, and effective place of learning. I was very impressed by the recent results on the BOE, on the New York State standards, the Regents, the AP, the IB. Congratulations to everyone to those excellent outcomes. I also want to thank this school board and your predecessors for your service and for the foundation work you have done on the leadership, the staff, and the curriculum and the standards here at Locust Valley. These results earlier tonight confirm for me a critical truth. This is a place where every student can get a good education, and by the way, where good students can get a great education. This has been especially true for my eldest son, who is transgender. Since he joined this community four years ago, he has embraced every academic opportunity offered here, and he's benefited from the support of your faculty and his peers. I'm very grateful for this environment you've provided and for those opportunities. And knowing how he contributes to his classes and to the community, I can tell you he has more than returned the favor. So that is why I view with some alarm this month and last month's board agendas. I believe that what I see as a misguided cosplay of culture war is a disheartening waste of time and can only result in eroding that culture of respect and opportunity that you all have created here. I urge this board to immediately turn its attention away from dismantling what has been built here and back to the crucial constructive work that you and past boards have done. It's such great work. Thank you.
May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Matt? Second? Ms. Fox? All those in favor? Good night, safe everyone, and a happy Thanksgiving. You're welcome.